Calling to order the Diamond Lake School District 76, roll call please. Here. Please rise for the pledge of allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So nice to hear those cute little voices. We're so happy you joined us. I know, that was the happiest pledge we've ever had. We now open the floor for public comments on agenda items. Do we have any public comments this evening? Again, if you're joining us virtually, please feel free to type that in the chat box and we will read it into the meeting. And if you are in person, please feel free to stand up and make your public comment. We'll pause for a second. I can't see if we have attendees. Yeah, but I mean, I was just looking to see if there was any attendees. I can't, oh, here they go. I can't see at that angle. Okay, no, it's fine. Okay, it does not look like we have any public comments this evening, so we will move on to presentations.
All right, so for the past few board meetings, we've had a spotlight on student learning. We had each of our schools and our students present, and we are going to end tonight with Diamond Lake. So I have some of my favorite people that are going to share the highlights of what's going on at Diamond Lake School. And I'm going to hand it over to Dr. Berger, who will introduce our presenters this evening.
Hi, everybody, this is-
Hold on a second. Let me introduce first, okay? Okay. You're right behind him. You're right behind him. Right in our order, the name of the player goes first, and then you're going to go right behind it. And me, perfect. Behind her, and lays on his way back.
Good evening, District 76. Thank you for welcoming Diamond Lake School to tonight's board meeting. We are honored to share our work with you. Kindness is happiness. Tonight's students will be presenting our work in relation to social emotional learning and our district's priorities and goals. Thank you. Specifically relating to priority number one, academic excellence, optimizing learning experiences for all District 76 students in relation to goal two, strengthen social emotional well-being, learning, and engagement for all students. Our presentation tonight also shows how our work is aligned with Illinois' social emotional learning goals. Yes. Okay. Goal one, develop self-awareness and self-management skills to achieve school and life success. Goal two, use social awareness and interpersonal skills to establish and maintain positive relationships. And goal three, demonstrate decision-making skills and responsible behaviors in personal, school and community contexts. With that, I'm going to turn it over to our sparkling presenters.
Hi, everybody, this is Juliette, and she is reminding us what makes you different makes you beautiful.
Hello, my name is Juliette. I use my communication device to talk. Students earn cup cards from teachers when they help others. I help get friends for class. Students can give kindness cards to each other when a friend makes them happy. My friends make me happy when they work with me. When students get cup cards, they feel happy and proud. My teachers and friends make me feel loved at school. When they use my communication device to talk and ask questions, my teachers and friends listen to me and smile. I love my school.
Hi, everybody, my name is Elijah, and I am presenting about cup cards. How you earn a cup card is by being kind, helpful, and listening to each other. The teacher gives you them when she sees you doing something kind or helpful. After you get a cup card, you get your picture taken with Dr. Berger. And it gets put up on the Berger Wall of Fame with a certificate. And you also get a diamond keychain and a bookmark. This is what they look like. Dr. Summer Lewis even got one. This is the Berger Wall of Fame. We earn the kindness cards when we are one kind and respectful. We earn them from other students and teachers. When you earn the kindness cards, you put them in a basket to try to win a field trip with Dr. Berger. The field trip is called Community Cuddles. You will learn about this later.
Hi, my name is Mia. Operation Snowball Day was for every single student at Diamond Lake School. Students talked about what they liked, what inspired them, and how they inspire other kids. We got to tie dye t-shirts, build marshmallows, and make our own mittens with kids from different classes.
Hi, my name is Ray. I am proud of the mittens we made because they are me and my friends being kind. The green and blue is, is, uh... The green and blue is me and my friend Francisco sitting together on the bus. The pink one is me and Brianna, um, um, and... I, I made my mittens pink because that's Brianna's favorite color. I also wrote two songs about, about this. One is called Kindness Is, the kindness song. Kindness is free for the whole school, yeah.
There's another one, here we go.
One is called Kindness Is Cool Remix. Kindness is cool, ba-ba-ba-bow, k-k-k-k. Remix, ba-ba-ba-bow, quack, 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 quack.
You wrote a student reflection form from Operation Snowball Day. My favorite part of Operation Snowball Day was batting with marshmallows and drinking hot chocolate because I'd never had it at school before, and it was fun to be with my friends. One thing I learned was everybody was different, and it is good to know because you can find more friends. Operation Snowball Day made me feel different and beautiful because I get, I got to do different things and everyone was calm.
My, my favorite part of Oper- Operation Snowball Day was the hot cocoa because I was cold and I got to spend the time with Warren, Richard, Alexa, Kenny, and Anthony. One thing I learned is that we always have to share toys and be kind to each other. Operation Snowball, Operation Snowball Day made me feel, um, different and beautiful because we made our team poster called Snow Rainbow, and we all got to draw whatever we wanted on it.
Hi, my name is Leah. It was really fun to make all these Valentine's Day cards for people we did not know. We gave them to people who are older than you and who live in a retirement center. We saw all these pictures of little kids giving the cards, and that made us happy. They also gave out cards at the public library. Even though their masks were on, we could tell they were excited to be there.
Hi, my name is Aiden. We painted anything that was kind onto jewel bags. Kids delivered them to the, to the stores and gave them to people. People felt happy because we shared kindness to them. Here are some more bags and kids passing them out. This month, we are making thank you cards for services that provide us safety, like firefighters and police officers. Here is a little treat that we hope fills your bucket. Please enjoy the popcorn and the movie that Mrs. Kasek made.
What did you learn? Kindness is amazing. Kindness can bring people together. Kindness helps people to be friends for longer times.
Kindness makes class fun, and it makes you glad to have a friend by you.
Kindness helps for you to work together with others in class.
Doing something kind for people we don't even know makes us feel happy. Kindness is free.
Say it with us.
Kindness is free!
Thank you so much for letting us present tonight. Nice job, you guys. So proud of you, and so proud of you guys. You did- Thank you so much for coming and sharing tonight. Look how cute.
And Dr. Summer Lewis, you look famous.
He's so funny. Nice job. They're so cute. Smile. Amazing. I don't know how we're going to tap that, you guys. I know, thank you so much. We're so proud of you. It was adorable. I did not pay. Ray's going to get an extra big lunch tomorrow. There's a full cake. Okay, well, the rest of our meeting is going to feel anticlimactic. But again, thank you, everyone, for coming to watch these kids present tonight. It's awesome to see all the hard work that they're putting into school and kind of the values that they're passing on. So we're really proud of them in our community. So thank you for joining us, but please feel free to leave and enjoy the rest of your evening. Although you are always welcome to stay for our business meeting. We enjoy having an audience. Okay, the first item on the business agenda tonight is the omnibus vote agenda. Items under the omnibus vote agenda are considered routine and are non-controversial and will be approved by one motion or motions. If any one board member, staff, administrator, or citizen wishes to have a separate vote on any item or items, that item or items will be pulled from the omnibus vote agenda and voted on separately. Be it resolved that the Diamond Lake 76 Board of Education accepts and approves the omnibus vote agenda. What? Oh, sorry. I'm, okay. Well, I keep seeing the action. It's, I scrolled too far on my screen. Okay, well, so that was good practice for next meeting. Okay, now we have, we do have some items for action, and so the first item for action is item B, which is student fees. And we discussed that at our last meeting. So before we vote, did anyone have any questions? No, okay. Be it resolved, the Diamond Lake 76 Board of Education approves the early childhood through grade eight student fees for the 2022-23 school year as presented. Early childhood, eighty-five dollars, kindergarten, a hundred and five dollars, first grade, a hundred and ten dollars, grades two through four, a hundred and twenty-five dollars, grade five, a hundred and twenty-eight dollars, grade six, a hundred and sixty-five dollars, grade seven, a hundred and twenty-eight dollars, grade eight, a hundred and forty dollars, inner scholastic sports fees, eighty-five dollars, intramurals, twenty dollars, clubs, thirty dollars, jazz band, eighty-five dollars, and summer school, a hundred and twenty dollars. May I have a motion to approve, please? Yes. Okay, and that motion is approved. We move on to another item for action, which is approving a contract with Performance Services, and that is for the boiler replacement, correct, Mr. Rogers? Be it resolved, the Diamond Lake School District 76 Board of Education approves the Performance Services to replace the boiler plant at West Oak Campus at a total cost not to exceed four hundred and ninety-three thousand, three hundred and one dollars. May I have a motion to approve, please? Yes. Okay, the next item is just to review the Lakeside Transportation Contract Extension. Mr. Rogers, I don't know if you want to talk about that. I know you, we've discussed it previously.
I really just wanted to say, so we had a lot of negotiations back and forth at Lakeside. This has been almost an eight to 10-month process that we've been working with them. We started at a very, very high one-year and even a two-year increase. So we really stressed how much of a partner we've been throughout the pandemic. We helped them out a lot with some of their fixed costs, and they also helped us out with some exceptional service, retaining drivers and getting us right back on track after the pandemic. So the seven and six percent increase for a two-year extension has been very favorable, especially considering some of our neighboring districts' renewals. So this is for a two-year agreement, and after that, you know, we'd explore a traditional bid route or some alternate options that I outlined in my memo.
Does anyone have any questions? No. Okay, then we will move on to item E, which is personnel. Be it resolved, the Diamond Lake 76 Board of Education accepts and approves the personnel items. As depicted on the agenda, we have two new hires, one resignation, and then just one informational position change. May I have a motion to approve, please? Yes.
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 And that item is approved, and that concludes our business agenda for the evening. Moving on now to board discussion. So the first item for board discussion is the 2022-23 board meeting calendar. You can see there's some notes on the calendar. The first question I have, or I wanted to pose to all of you, is for the July 12th board meeting. We only have one board meeting in July, and I know already that I will be out of town and will not be able to attend. So I wanted to make sure that we had quorum before we go ahead and approve the calendar. So you don't, we're not going to vote on this tonight. We'll bring it to the next board meeting. But if everyone could review the calendar or just see your availability, that way we can make sure that, you know, we have quorum, especially if we need to, you know, approve bills for the month of July. Then the other thing to note on the meeting calendar is for October, because of Yom Kippur, we are proposing to maybe have just one meeting in October, which would be the second meeting on the 18th. If we do need two meetings in October, do again to bills or something coming up that we need to vote on prior to the second meeting, then we're proposing having the first meeting on Monday, October 3rd. So that's kind of informational. If you see any conflicts with that, just let us know. And I think that pretty much covers it. You can see the budget meetings listed, the lobby hearing. And then again, it will be an election year, so you can see the seating of the new board members next May. Anyone have any questions? Okay, just at the next meeting, if you could follow up and let us know if you won't be attending, especially in July, then we can go ahead and look to finalizing those dates. Okay, the next item, I will turn it over to you.
Thank you. I know we've discussed last year when we received the S R dollars, how we were going to kind of allocate them and put them towards staff. And so this year, as you saw, and you'll soon see, next month when we're going to have the instructional coaches present, but I know last summer, we had Mrs. Pecoraro and Mr. Smith present an overview of instructional coaching, and the board was very generous and supportive of adding on another coach, Mrs. Tweed, who is K-5 literacy. We wanted to see how that went this year. We are going to be presenting you with the results of the instructional coaching survey and how staff have responded to using instructional coaches, how they used them and the results of that. And so I know we've had discussions on, wanted to see how this year went. It's gone very well. Like I said, we'll be sharing those presentations with you at the next board meeting, or excuse me, at the May board meeting. But we'd also like to propose using the remaining S R dollars or some of those remaining S R dollars towards the implementation of a math coach, grades K through five. So we've included the job description there for you. Dr. Draca is available for, you know, questions too, but it's very similar to the model that we're following right now, and the K-5 models worked really well with Sharon working in both buildings. And so we thought this was a definite need. I know we've talked about it as a board before, but we'd like to bring it to, for your review. So we'd like to post it as soon as possible and, you know, look for a quality candidate to hire and start in the fall. Questions, comments, further myself or Dr. Draca?
No, I think this is in line with what you guys have been working towards. And I think the board has seen clearly the impact, the positive impact that coaches have had on the district, and so I think we would be in support of this.
Okay, thank you.
Welcome. That wraps up board discussion. Freedom of Information Request, we had one. Notices and Communications, as usual, we just have the reminder of the current board meeting calendar for this school year. There's a link to the Diamond Edge newsletter, and then substitute appreciation. And then substitute appreciation.
Sure. I know, we have talked about this. And I know Mrs. Bayless had given us some great ideas in the beginning of the year when she met with Dr. Draca, Mr. Rogers, and myself of just, how do we show our substitutes appreciation? And I think she comes with firsthand knowledge being a substitute in another district. And especially now that we have, you know, such shortages in the educational field, especially with our substitutes. We really wanted to take this opportunity to recognize and appreciate our substitutes. So I just wanted to share with you how we did that. And I think I've got to most of them, but we got them some D-76 spiritware. I shared with them, as you see in the packet, a personalized card showing our appreciation because I know they have lots of choices of where they could spend their days, and we're just grateful that they choose to spend them in D-76. So just wanted to share that with you. And thank you, Mrs. Bayless, for meeting with us and for that wonderful idea.
That's great. Okay. Moving on to public comments and petitions on non-agenda items. Do we have any public comments and petitions on non-agenda items this evening? Again, if you have a comment, please feel free to type that into the chat box, and we can read it into the meeting. And we'll pause for a minute. Okay, it does not look like there are any public comments. Moving on to others. The only other I had was the Statement of Economic Interest filing is due in May. I've been forwarding some emails to the board members because in case you haven't looked at it, they've totally redone the entire form, and it asked for a lot of information. There is a webinar on Thursday that Robin Schwartz is doing to give more information. It doesn't look like the additional explanation information that came from the state is very helpful. So hopefully that webinar will be helpful. And if not, maybe that's something we want to follow up with Hodges just to see if they have additional guidance. Because it's, it's really a lot of disclosure this time. So I just wanted to make sure everyone was aware of that. And then, and to also not miss that filing deadline because then you get, you start getting caught. So. Does anyone else have any others? Okay, then we do not have closed session this evening. There are just a couple items in the board packet for your information. And so then we will have a motion to adjourn. Yes. Thank you, everybody.